Good afternoon, I'd like to call the regular Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on May the nineteenth at seven PM. I'd like to welcome everyone here, appreciate you all coming, especially our media. And at this time, I will ask Vice Chairman Donovan for invocation.
Um, most of you probably know that, um, the five of us up here don't always agree on everything, and neither will the seven that are getting ready to sit in these chairs either. Um, and I found it interesting over the recent debate about, uh, school prayer that they seem to think that that was the case. Uh, but until we, we vote to, for the chairman to speak for us, uh, no one speaks for us. We speak for ourselves. And that's the same way it is with prayer. And finally, uh, I guess just before our meeting last time, Supreme Court, uh, agreed that we have that opportunity to pray and to say what we want to when we pray. So as always, I'm getting ready to pray, but this just isn't Lindsey talking. It is, I'm not speaking for the rest of these people, uh, but I'm just talking about me. And I'm hoping that, um, when we pray, we pray and the effects of those prayers do impact our decisions, and we do make good decisions for everybody in Stanley County. Let us pray together. Well, I, I just, uh, thank you tonight for an opportunity to, um, approach you. Uh, your word tells us that we are capable of doing that and that, uh, you encourage us to do that, to seek guidance from you, uh, to ask for wisdom, uh, to, um, sometimes just, uh, to vet the difficulties and frustrations we have with others and so that you can give us a spirit of peace and guidance and show us how that we should behave as human beings and how we should get along and how we should work together. I thank you for the opportunity to, to live in this country where we have, at least for now, the opportunity to say public prayers as well as to speak privately with you anytime and at all times. I ask tonight that you, um, give us ears to hear the things that, uh, we should pay attention to, give us wisdom to make decisions that are profitable for all those citizens that we serve, and help us individually, uh, help me individually tonight to be the, the person that you've called me to be, that you've empowered me to be, and that your spirit that lives within me enables me to be. And I'm glad tonight to have this prayer and say it in Jesus' name. Amen. Please stand with us as we pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands to one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval or adjustment to the agenda? I have one addition, it'd be the resolution about the, uh, school lottery funds. It'd be, add that as item six, and then consent agenda will be item seven. Are there any other, uh, changes or additions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as changed.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as changed.
Motion to approve by, uh, Commissioner Ashudo. Do I hear a second? Seconded by, uh, Commissioner Morton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Commissioner Donovan, if you would, would you run this meeting? I'm, back's hurting me a little bit, and I need to, I may have to grimace a little bit. If you would, run the meeting for me tonight. Thank you, sir.
Okay, and we certainly hope that, uh, you'll be feeling better, um, be able to sit with us and stay with us. First item on the agenda is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Annual Certification, and tonight we have, uh, as our presenter, Jackie DeSantis, Stanley County JCPC chairperson. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. Most of you know me as your attorney, the DSS attorney, and also the chair. I came before you last year. I'm here again. Every year, the JCPC program provides the county with funds. Those funds are kind of routed through the county, but generally controlled by the board, and because of that, we need the county's approval. I think you may have, I think Ms., um, Brummett did provide you all with a copy of the certification that I actually will need to be signed by the chairman. And this year again, they awarded the possibility of board in the county, one hundred seventy-four thousand. We think that we provided good services last year through the Lift Academy, through the restitution program, and we also had the Rowan County program that was also available for, they had funding last year, but that was for sex offender treatment. Luckily, we didn't use those funds. They would be returned to the program itself, to the count, to the, um, state. And this year, we have four programs, and that have been approved for next year's funds, and like I said, they will run through the county. However, all I, uh, what I need from you all is approval of the certification that states that we've, where JCPC board is doing what they need to do, and also the approval of a thousand dollar funds out of the one hundred seventy-four thousand dollars that we are provided. We use a thousand of that for meetings, and that was it. That's the only funds, and we would need approval of those funds.
Thank you. Does anyone have any, uh, questions of Mr. DeSantis? I know that, uh, I had, I had the privilege of serving on JCPC, and the, uh, the membership is a broad array of folks. You didn't go through the list, but they obviously are, are people that both serve, uh, the courts and law enforcement, the social services, portion recreation, uh, members of the community, United Way. It's a broad array of people, and people who are all seemingly interested in, in making sure that, uh, uh, justice is, is, is served, and especially with the, with, with juveniles throughout our community. So we certainly appreciate those who, who have served. You didn't mention it, but the certification is actually a requirement that, uh, of the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, so it's something that we should do. But if, if, if there are no questions, certainly would entertain a motion at this time.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the, uh, members list and to accept the thousand dollars for the two thousand fourteen fifteen budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McIntyre, second by Commissioner Ashudo, that, that we approve, uh, this presentation. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Second item on our agenda tonight is a presentation of the budget, uh, for Stanley County Schools for fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen, and we're happy to have back in front of us tonight Dr. Terry Griffin, our school superintendent. Welcome.
Thank you. See if I can get the PowerPoint up and going here. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you this evening and present Stanley County Schools' budget requests for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year. Uh, this evening, I have Mr. Bill Jaysey, the School Systems Chief Finance Officer with me, and along with Mr. Troy Pressler, uh, the School Systems Chief Technology Officer, and they'll be available to help assist with any questions that you may have at the end of the presentation along with myself. I also like to thank members, representatives from Stanley County Schools Board of Education for being here this evening as well. In front of you, you see Stanley County Schools', uh, vision and mission statement. The information that you will hear this evening supports our vision and reflects the mission care, um, of Stanley County Schools. How is Stanley County Schools doing as a school system? One of the best ways to tell our story is by looking at our graduation data. Uh, as you look at this graph here, you can see that the cohort graduation rate for Stanley County Schools was eighty-two point three percent for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year. And I'd like to say that despite state and budget cuts over the past six years, uh, we are at our highest cohort graduation rate over this period of time. Um, I'd also like to point out to you on the right, the results of our two thousand twelve thirteen graduation data verification survey. If you look at these statistics, it tells you consistent with historical data that eighty-seven percent of our graduates planned this past year to further their education in either four or two-year programs. Five percent plan to enter the military, and eight percent plan to enter the workforce. I also like to point out that the average scholarship received each year by Stanley County Schools seniors is in the range of one point five million dollars. So, uh, again, our graduates are competing for and receiving scholarship monies to help them further their educational plans. These facts continue to help tell our story. Of particular interest here is the source of our revenues. In the lower right-hand corner, uh, you see that eighty, excuse me, sixty-eight percent of our budget is state-funded. Eighteen percent is locally funded by you, the commissioners, and eight percent is federally funded, and additional six percent through enterprise, which is our actual, our child nutrition, um, budget. The bottom bullet there points out that our thirteen fourteen operating budget for Stanley County Schools was seventy-three million, four hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And again, I mentioned the fact of where we get our operating budget to emphasize the impact that state cuts have had on our operating budget over the past six or seven years. I'd also like to direct your attention to the fact that, uh, according to the North Carolina Report Card, Stanley County class sizes are equal or less to the state average in all grade spans. And also would like to point out the next to the last bullet here, that during the twelve thirteen school year, that Stanley County Schools awarded over five hundred, five hundred and fifty-two industry-related credentials as a part of our career technical education courses. Those were credentials in the area of construction, healthcare, food industry, and, and, and business. As we begin the process of preparing our budget for the fourteen fifteen school year, stakeholders and myself began reviewing data from a variety of sources, both state and local sources. And again, uh, this data will be used to substantiate my budget requests for the fourteen fifteen school year to note progress areas and identify focus areas in our strategic Stanley County Schools' first goal is to deliver an instructional program that will prepare our students for the future, and that's students at all levels, all ability levels, and all interest levels. On the right-hand side, you see some of the key accomplishments that are aligned with goal one during the thirteen fourteen or our current year. Through our local current expense budget, you funded, last year you funded four online facilitators to facilitate the delivery of online courses in our high schools. Uh, we were able to develop ten courses, and we've had students in all of our high schools enrolled in, we're calling it Stanley, online, um, as well as students across the system enrolled in North Carolina, or enrolled in courses through the North Carolina School of Science and Math. Uh, we also have had students enrolled in courses taught through Stanley Community College for college credit through the Career and College Promise. And again, I want to thank you for allowing us those positions this current year in order to provide our students with this opportunity. We utilized our capital outlay budget this current year as a funding source for the implementation of our one-to-one Chromebook project. And again, I'll not read each and every line there to you, but, uh, I know you've had time to, to look at the, um, materials that you may have had ahead of time regarding our accomplishments. The next couple of slides will outline some of the priority areas that I believe are important as we move into the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year. Now, I know this is a lot of lines here, but what I would ask you to look at here are the red bars. And the red bars here indicate Stanley County as compared to the state area, or the state itself in terms of proficiency. In the upper left-hand corner, it shows our overall end-of-grade assessments. These are, um, this is math, reading, and our science scores as compared to the state average. Uh, there was a two point six percent variance in our overall proficiency in that of the state. When you look at the end-of-course assessments, and these are our, um, assessments that we, state assessments that we give in high school, there was a three point one percent variance in our level of proficiency in that of the state. The composite, uh, tells the overall story. We are in the average range, um, two point seven point difference in Stanley County and the state. However, I acknowledge we have room for improvement. And, uh, the following slides will key in on specific areas reflecting the need to invest both human and capital resources as we move into the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year. Literacy in grades K through eight has been and must continue to be a focus area. During the current two thousand thirteen fourteen school years, the state reduction of teacher assistance necessi- necessitated the reduction of teacher assistant, the teacher assistant workday in Stanley County from eight hours to seven and a half hours each day. As noted by our teachers and principals, uh, this reduction has placed a huge strain on their ability to schedule and to support small reading groups in our school, elementary As noted, and based on feedback from our classroom ti- teachers, materials to promote student engagement through hands-on science labs, uh, will be a wise investment for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year. Uh, we'll be asking for a one-time budget increase of eighty-three thousand dollars to provide each school additional science lab materials. Literacy development extends beyond the elementary schoo- uh, elementary years. Uh, therefore, I am requesting a one-time budget increase of eighty-three thousand to invest in developmentally age-appropriate literacy materials to support grades K through I'd like to spend a little bit of time on this slide, um, this afternoon. To the right, you see some dropout facts, and again, I'm not going to read those to you. Um, I would like to note that Stanley County Schools had a hundred and ten dropouts for the twelve, two thousand twelve thirteen school year. I'd also like to note that lower, the fact on the bottom right-hand column there is that a dropout has the potential of cost, and again, this is general information, not just Stanley County, um, compiled by the National Dropout Association, that Stan- that a dropout has the potential amount of five hundred thousand, or costs a commu- community a potential five hundred thousand dollars over the dropout lifetime. Within our current budget, uh, we have implemented dropout prevention committees in our high schools and plan to expand them into our middle schools during the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year. We are partnering with Stanley Community College to optimize career and technical pro- programs that are available to our students through career, college and career promise. As noted on the trend graph here on the lower left-hand side, Stanley County Schools reduced dropouts three consecutive years. During this timeframe, we utilized an evening credit recovery program. The program was funded by a North Carolina dropout prevention grant, and it has since been eliminated through state budget reductions. This evening, I will be requesting an increase of a hundred and thirty thousand in our local budget to invest in credit recovery and career development for potential dropouts. The money will be utilized to pay staff for working additional evening hours. This slide summarizes the fourteen fifteen budget priorities and requests to support goal, which support goal one of our strategic plan. It does show an increase of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, including a hundred and thirty as continuation for the career development dropout prevention center. However, I would like to note to you, I have no problem with continued funding, or funding being, um, stopped after the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year contingent upon the demonstrated impact of our dropout and graduation rates. So again, we will evaluate the program, um, and would be requesting, uh, the continuation of support for this program based on the impact that it's having on our dropout rates. The second goal of Stanley County Schools is to attract and retain quality instructional leaders at all levels. This slide notes some of our accomplishments for the two thousand thirteen fourteen fiscal year under goal two. The PD, or professional development noted in the last three bullets, was funded through In order to provide focused and consistent follow-up on professional development in our high schools, I am requesting a hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollar increase in our local budget to fund curriculum and professional development lead teachers. For the upcoming school year, I'd like to phase this in over a two-year period. I'm asking this amount, um, to cover the addition of two, uh, lead teachers. Again, my goal is to have one in each high school, uh, who would also serve the middle schools that feed into them. Moving forward, should our state budget reach a level that would allow us to utilize state funds for these positions, I certainly would not expect, uh, these positions to remain in the local budget. And again, when I presented this presentation to my board of, or actually to my finance committee, the Board of Education, they asked for some data that would support the effectiveness or, uh, of such positions, and, um, what I was able, able to do is I noted some of the, some of the districts, surrounding districts that scored, uh, higher than Stanley County in the area of secondary education, and one of the common threads that ran into their staffing patterns was that they do have either assistant principals for instruction, um, or they have curriculum support, um, individuals that work in the schools to support curriculum development and data analysis. This slide, uh, summarizes goal two priorities for the two thousand fourteen fifteen fiscal year. Uh, it reflects an increase of two hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars to the budget. Again, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars of that is to move our teacher assistants back to an eight-hour workday to support literacy in K two and to add to locally paid teacher positions in our high schools. It is the goal of Stanley County Schools to deliver instructional programs in a safe teaching and learning environment, and so this goal three supports healthy and safe students and employees. During the two thousand thirteen fourteen fiscal year, we noted many accomplishments. Last year, you granted us an increase in our local budget of fifty-seven thousand, thirty-eight dollars to add an additional school resource officer. We sought after and supplemented our budget for the current year by approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand with North Carolina safety grants to add to more, or to additional SR, school SROs, and funding for the installation of panic alarms in all of our schools, and we'll be working to get those installed, and hopefully, uh, and the goal is to have those in place by the beginning of the fourteen fifteen school year. Also, through an increase of a hundred and twenty-six thousand in our two thousand and thirteen fourteen capital outlay budget, we are installing security access systems in our high schools. Um, we are in the process, I think West Stanley High School is currently, um, be- is currently being installed there. Uh, we're also going to be able to install a solution at Albemarle High School with the monies that you allocated for this school year. And I would note that we expect to be able to complete the other two high schools without asking for an additional increase to, to cover that installation. During our needs assessment for the upcoming school year, we noted the need to lower our student to nurse ratio. This slide indicates the scope of duties of a school nurse in Stanley County Schools. Uh, it also indicates a ratio of one nurse to one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine students. In order to help lower this ratio, I am requesting an increase of sixty thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars to invest an additional nurse for the upcoming school year. Uh, this, the addition of one school nurse would lower our student to nurse ratio to one to one thousand, two hundred and forty-one. Uh, it's still higher than many of our surrounding districts as noted by the chart here, but it is certainly a start in the right direction. This slide shows another important area in our overall classroom support, and that's our social workers. Currently, we have three social workers, uh, to support approximately hundred, uh, eighty, eight thousand, seven hundred students in Stanley County Schools, um, making a ratio of approximately one to three thousand students. Uh, we are fortunate to have just, to, to have received a grant through JCPC that, I think you just, uh, got that information, uh, for approximately fifteen thousand dollars to support the addition, uh, of a social worker to support the area of truancy reduction. Uh, I am requesting an increase of forty-five thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars to supplement this amount, uh, needed to employ an additional social worker for the This next slide addresses our need for certified athletic trainers. Our needs assessment continues to sh- to show the need for certified athletic trainers to reduce liability and to support the safety of our student athletes. We are in the process, in the process of negotiating a partnership with Stanley Regional or Carolina Healthcare to phase certified athletic trainers into all four of our high schools. My goal is to add two certified athletic trainers during the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year, and then two additional ones during the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. This evening, I am requesting a one-time, um, increase of forty thousand, um, dollars to be utilized as a startup for the program. In support of keeping our students healthy and active, our middle schools have expressed a strong interest in adding cross-country as, to the athletic program of our middle schools. Uh, these numbers indicate the number of students that have participated in a running club at each of our middle schools. So again, it, it substantiates the interest level of, of running in our middle schools. I am requesting an increase of eight thousand dollars for coaching supplements to add cross-country to our middle school program. As noted, um, like I said, as noted on the slide, you know, our students are actively participating, and this is a sporting event that students of, uh, that many students' ability levels and skill levels can participate in successfully. This slide summarizes, uh, the two thousand fourteen fifteen budget priorities that are aligned with goal three for Stanley County Schools. It includes an increase of one hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars with forty thousand being one time, and the remaining one hundred thirteen, five hundred eighty-seven dollars being requested as a continuation request. Stanley County Schools recognize- Stanley County Schools recognizes the importance of establishing community stake, and stakeholder partnerships. This slide shows accomplishments during the two thousand thirteen fourteen budget year under goal four. I am very pleased to announce that Stanley County Schools has established the Stanley County Schools Educational Foundation during the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year through a seed donation of fifty thousand dollars to, to support instructional priorities. And again, this is a project that I look to see grow in the coming years, and it's a way that we will be able to invest in instructional priorities in special projects. This slide again summarizes the two thousand fourteen fifteen budget priorities for goal four, noting no request for an increase in this area. Finally, goal five. Stanley County Schools recognizes the value of safe, technology-rich facilities to support twenty-first century teaching and learning. This slide outlines accomplishments under goal five for the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year. As noted, we invested five hundred thousand dollars of our two thousand thirteen fourteen capital outlay budget into technology for the current school year, much of that for the implementation of our Chromebook project. Other accomplishments under twenty-first century systems include the selling of the old Central School, the leasing of New London Choice Middle School to, for the Tar Heel Challenge Program, and our partnership with Stanley Community College to utilize West Main for their programs. An additional area to indicate our goal to be efficient is our alignment of our career and technical programs such as cosmetology with Stanley Community College to avoid duplication and to increase efficiency. This slide shows our, summarizes our needs assessment for goal five, and also indicates that we will be able to meet our priorities for the fourteen fifteen school year without additional requests in this area. Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Josie. Mr. Josie will provide you additional background information on the budget and a final summary of our requests, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Lucas, thank you for, for your time tonight. The first slide here, what I want to go through is just the state of the North Carolina and the budget they're providing to Stanley County Schools. This is their planning allotment. Of course, you may have heard just last week, Governor McCrory's budget came out. Of course, legislators have not produced a budget as of yet. What we have here is the two thousand thirteen fourteen versus two thousand fourteen fifteen school budget. The dollar allotments across the top are showing a current decrease of approximately two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And position allotments, which is actually the, the bulk of our state budget, is going down five months of employment, which is, equates to fourteen thousand, just over fourteen thousand dollars, a total of two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar decrease from the state of North Carolina. This is a ten-year history of the county appropriations, blue bar being the current expense, red bar being the capital, and green bar being the debt. This data did come from the NCACC website. What it shows here across the bottom is the trend line, that is the per pupil funding. And you'll see, of course, one thing I think that you could be proud of is that even during a down economy, that number did increase over a ten-year period. This is the fourteen fifteen local budget summary, and what I've done is actually given you a two-year history here. At the top is the twelve thirteen current expense funding of nine point four million dollars, and then an increase, as Dr. Griffin had mentioned, the one middle school resource officer and the four online facilitators that you increased the budget for in two thousand thirteen fourteen, to give us a beginning budget, so to speak, in two thousand thirteen fourteen of nine million five hundred seventy thousand dollars. What I've done here on the, the very first line under that, the two hundred and eighty-six thousand, that you'll notice was the decrease of the state funds. So if we were to just hold the line and produce a hold-the-line budget, you would need to show that as an increase on the local side. We then came up with to offset those cut, that, those cuts on the state side with cuts of our own, and so that we're not just asking, but we're also showing that we're willing to make some cuts on our own. And the two thousand fourteen fifteen budget reductions there will be the reduction of one building-level administration position, the continued energy savings that we're putting in place across our district, transferring seventy-five thousand dollars out of our textbook fund, and also with the Chromebook project, we had budgeted the amount for, obviously four grade levels, and the high schools only need three grade levels in the middle schools. So there is a reduction in, in needs there to come up with a total budget reductions of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then there, the next set are the budget increases, summary of what Dr. Griffin has already presented, and I broke them down as the one-time expenditures and the continuation Comes to a total budget request of ten million two sixty-seven oh thirty-seven, which is an increase over the thirteen fourteen funding of six hundred ninety-six thousand one sixty-nine. This is our current two thousand fourteen fifteen capital budget request. As Dr. Griffin mentioned, it is fifty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars less than the amount that was funded this year. Several of the items, just to note, obviously, the hundred and fifty thousand on the right, miscellaneous roof repairs, we continue to have those in our budget pretty much on an ongoing basis. I'll also direct your attention to the top left, controlled access at North Stanley High School and South Stanley High School, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Those are the last two high schools in that project, and of course, happy to report that the four schools that bid did go to Secure Canopy, a Stanley County business that's housed at your airport. Any, only other thing there, we are planning to replace the West Stanley High School gym floor and several bleachers in our gyms as well. Well, I was just trying to hit some of the high numbers, and also on the far right's a replacement of a transportation wrecker, ninety thousand dollars. That also is coming along with a state funding of ninety thousand. It's a hundred and eighty thousand dollar wrecker, but they're going to give, they're going to pledge fifty percent of that budget. That actually concludes our presentation. I'm sure you may have some questions.
Do members of the board have a question for any of the school representatives here?
I've got a couple. Go ahead.
How much shall we receive per pupil from the state, dollar-wise approximately?
Approximately, just over five thousand dollars.
Okay, so like with the dropout rate, if you could get more kids to stay in school, like, all hundred and ten of them, that'd be like a half a million dollars if you're getting. Then, um, a couple of things I noticed is, one is, I appreciate y'all really utilizing some of the buildings, especially with some of the older buildings you're not using anymore. That's a good thing y'all did with, you know, the Tar Heel Academy and selling Central Elementary School and stuff. And then we met with the Community College Board about a week or two ago, and they have an interest in Ridgecrest and perhaps making a culinary school at that, and I would hope that maybe you guys would seriously look into that. That'd be something really unique to the area, especially when we look at the budget requests, and you're, you're spending twenty thousand dollars to replace a boiler out of Ridgecrest. So you, you know, when you have buildings, they cost money, and every time, you know, and hope you guys seriously could take a look at redistricting and perhaps school closings if needed, because, you know, a lot of these repairs, you know, if you only need nineteen schools and you have twenty-one, you know, it's just a costly thing, that's just comments on that, but I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know it's tough, but I appreciate y'all working in limited, with limited budget.
Anyone else? Again, I compliment you on the presentation. I also want to express again our gratitude to school officials for meeting with us several weeks ago. Thought we had a very open and instructive conversation that was certainly very positive. And we, I know the manager's going to be taking all the information that you've given to us and boiling it down to what we can do. We're certainly looking forward to the budget season as we move forward to look at all these requests, as well as others that we have to look at. Again, one more time, does anybody have comment or question? Otherwise, thank you very much.
And thank you for consideration to all or any of our requests.
Next item on the agenda is the Economic Development Commission, consideration of economic incentive agreement for Global Packaging. Presenter is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You'll need to call a public hearing this evening to consider this economic incentive agreement. The public notice is in your packet. The project, which was referred to as Project Flex, is in Global Packaging Solutions Incorporated in Oakboro. The term of this agreement will be five years. The anticipated investment over that five-year term is one million eighty thousand dollars. Anticipated taxes to be paid with, over that five-year investment term, minus depreciation for the, the personal property will be twenty-six thousand sixty-four dollars. The incentive amount of a thirty percent grant over those five years is seven thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars, and the jobs to be created is a minimum of five new jobs. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions of the manager before we declare the public hearing Seeing none, I will declare a public hearing open to discuss the incentive agreement for Global Packaging Solutions. Is there anyone here tonight that would want to come forward to speak for or against this project? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed and ask the board, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we accept the economic development package to help with Global Packaging Solutions.
Have a motion to accept. I hear a second. So a motion by Commissioner Shuto, second by Commissioner Morton. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? So that this incentive package passes, and I understand that, Mr. Manager, we have other representatives actually in Oakboro tonight looking at this at the same time that we're considering this.
That's correct, sir. The, the town of Oakboro will be taking similar action tonight, or at least we hope they will be, and our economic development director, Paul Stratus, is there to answer any questions.
Very good. Look forward to moving forward with this project. Next item on our agenda is a presentation of the two thousand fourteen fifteen recommended budget for Stanley County, and the presenter will be County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pleased to be able to present the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year fourteen fifteen. Significant amount of work has been put into this, certainly careful consideration, a look at our accomplishments from the prior year and where we're making progress, and I'm going to share some of that with you tonight, and I would be, it would be, I would be remiss not to thank the department heads and certainly our finance staff and HR for all of their assistance with this budget. A great deal of time goes into developing the, the budgets at the department level and making those requests, and then reviewing all of those and putting together this final product that you have before you this evening. And then certainly, we will go from here for the public hearing and then several budget workshops before you all adopt a budget at the end of the June. So without further delay, I'll go through this. Basically, the bottom line on this budget, no recommended tax rate increase. There's a focus on deferred maintenance. We've got aging buildings, and we've been putting off some of this deferred maintenance for several years, and we need to reinvest in ourselves. This budget focuses on continuing to support our economic development initiatives, both the incentive grants, the existing industry that we put in, that you all put into place, the, the focus on existing industry and the additional resources you put to that last year's budget, that those dollars continue to stay in this budget. I've also recommended an additional funding for agricultural economic development support, increased funding for education, and I think you'll see that our performance results indicate that progress is being made. This is a multi-year budget illustration. This budget calls for fifty-six point zero three million dollars. That's about a five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar increase. That's one point zero five percent. Inflation since July is one point one percent, measured by the CPI Southern Region, so this increase is less than inflation. You can also see that we're still just a little above where we were in oh-nine-ten, and so we've, we've gone through several years of lean budgets, and we are ramping back up. But again, I don't, I believe this, this increase is certainly consistent with inflation and, and as a result of no tax rate increase, I believe it's, it's not burdening, burdening our citizens or our businesses. The, the budget includes three point, thirty-seven point two million dollars in county money, local money. That's a four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar increase, one point one percent, again consistent with CPI and inflation. Four point three billion in assessed value, that's about a point nine percent increase in assessed value. The budget includes eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in fund balance, that's a sixty-one thousand dollar decrease from last year's appropriation of fund balance. However, six hundred and sixty-two thousand of that, over seventy-five percent, is tied to one-time capital outlay and educational grants. Just the areas of focus, jobs and investment, being more efficient and improving the quality of life, and I'll go through some of the performance indicators that we've seen in those three focus areas. When you look at jobs and investment, we created the highest number of jobs since two thousand ten. In two thousand ten, that was primarily one industry with Michelin, but this is, this year has been our most successful year in terms of adding jobs since two thousand ten. Our prospect site visits are trending higher. We've been able to leverage our county dollars for the AMIT facility, the Advanced Manufacturing and Industrial Technology Program at the Community College. We acquired the Oakboro Sewer Treatment Plant, just did that closing on Friday, which will definitely assist us with moving forward with some, some sewer issues in the western part of the county, and we can address those, and hopefully that will spur growth. And the Tar Heel project, Tar Heel Challenge Project's being designed, and the demo work has already started at that facility, and we will see those jobs being created over the next twelve, twelve to eighteen months. When you look at being more efficient, our property tax burden is below both the state and regional average for similar-sized North Carolina counties. This tax, this recommended tax rating, tax rate staying at sixty-seven cents is, for the eighth consecutive year, if you all were to pass this budget at this tax rate, that would be eight consecutive years that you've held that tax rate at sixty-seven cents. Employee, our employees per capita is below the average of similar-sized North Carolina counties. Our capital asset condition ratio has improved since two thousand nine, and our employee healthcare expenses are the lowest since they were in two thousand eleven, despite the fact that we're seeing significant increases in inflation in the, in the healthcare industry. When you look at quality of life, our per capita library and cultural arts spending exceeds the average of similar-sized counties in North Carolina. Our education funding per student continues to rise. Our reported violent crime rate continues to decline. The county's human, community health rankings are demonstrating improvement, and our child abuse recurrence rate continues to trend below the state average. And so when you look at all the things that make up quality of life, you all are making, making progress and continuing to be, this continues to be a very good place to raise a family. In terms of what I'm recommending in the, in next year's budget, under the growing jobs and investment, included twelve, twelve thousand five hundred dollars to upgrade the kitchen at the Aggreg Civic Center, to enhance our value-added agricultural processing. I'll just give you an example, Cody Strawberry Farm would love to be able to sell strawberries to the school system, but they can't because they don't meet the gap certification. Those are requirements for generally accepted agricultural practices, and there's a certain way that food has to be processed. We can make investments in that, that, that commercial kitchen that's along the side of the, the stage at the Aggreg Civic Center. There's a dock there so folks can bring that, that stuff in, they can process, and that, then, and meet that gap certification and be able to, to sell that, those products not only to our school system, but really add value to any product. It may be strawberries, it may be pecans, it may be jams, it may be jellies, who knows? But there's all kinds of opportunities to market that, not only regionally, not, not only statewide, but export that around the globe. I mean, I'm recommending maintaining our funding for our existing industry initiatives, maintaining funding for our tax incentive grants, additional funding for a crops agent. Union County and, and us, we're sharing a crops agent. Union County has decided they want that crops agent full-time, and so I'm recommending that we put, that we are putting additional dollars into our corporate extension budget to make sure that we can fund that position half with the county and half with the state. At this point in time, we were, currently we're funding that a third, now we would ramp that up to be a half, because I believe that crops agent is critical to our local economy. And additional funding for education and workforce development. Our increasing operational efficiency- Our increasing operational efficiency, again, maintaining a tax rate for an eighth consecutive year if you were to approve the 67 cent tax rate. The budget is recommended to increase by less than inflation. There's a continued, I want to continue to focus on our initiatives for, that have generated healthcare savings. That's both our wellness clinic and our gain sharing with employees. And technology investments in EMS, IT and elections to increase efficiency. And additional funding for deferred maintenance and our energy efficiency repairs. When you look at education, I'm recommending a 1% increase to current expense for Stanley Community College. And additionally, I'm recommending a $25,000 one-time grant for energy efficiency improvements at the school. And so, with a greater than a 2.5% local dollar increase. For the Stanley County Schools, I'm recommending a 1% increase to current expense. That's $95,709. I'm also recommending $150,000 in one-time supplies and materials grant so that they can purchase some of the materials and supplies you heard of this evening, including those, the $40,000 for the athletic training, the classroom supplies and the science supplies and the, and the literacy materials. I'm also recommending a $30,000 increase in capital outlay. And I realize the school system has said they need a decrease in capital outlay, but by statute, we have to give them what we project to be our, a certain percentage of our sales tax. And so, if we're projecting an increase in sales tax, I have to give a percentage of that by statute to the school system. So this would be an additional $30,000 that they'll be able to put into additional capital outlay initiatives that they didn't have listed, that I know they're like us, they got aging buildings and you can always do more deferred maintenance or put it away for a rainy day and be able to have those dollars available in the future. Where your money goes, 87%, $48.8 million for mandated services, jails, debt, DSS, EMS, sheriff, education, and there are others. 76% goes to three major categories of spending, health and human services, education and public safety. And so, I think it's important, I think, for the public to know that there's not, first of all, there's not a lot of discretion in, in this budget. 87% goes to mandated services, meaning 13% goes to discretionary services, such as economic development in the airport, in the libraries, things that people look to for quality of life. But the majority of our funding is going to things we have to do, such as the jail and debt and EMS and sheriff. And again, 76% is going to three major categories. One-third of local dollars are allocated to education. If you look at our human capital recommendations, I'm recommending a 1% COLA to be effective 7-1 for our employees. I'm also recommending $160,000 be a set aside in contingency for a possible pay for performance, also merit in 1-15 or January of 2015. That is consistent with what we did in 2014 for our employees in terms of merit. I believe it's important that we reward employees who are being innovative and are highly performing. And obviously, that, that's contingent on us having the revenues, that our sales taxes coming in where we expected to do, that we haven't had expenditures that we didn't plan on. And so, we always evaluate that and decide in January whether we can do that. But I'm asking that those dollars be a set aside in contingency for that. Again, I'm recommending the elimination of one position in the tax office. This is consistent with where we were going with the tax and tag program last year. Basically, now that the state is doing the collection of the tag and the tax together, we're not in the business of collecting taxes for vehicles. And about a half of our work volume in terms of taxes, half of it was vehicles, the other half was real property. And so, we've taken essentially a half of our, our work volume off of our staff. This position's been vacant since February and we froze it. And so, I'm recommending that we eliminate it and for the next year. But I'm also seeking to increase an administrative support position that's actually a generalist position who can work in the tax office and the tax administration office upstairs and they can float based on times of high volume in those different areas. And I'm recommending that they move from a 30-hour position to a 37 and a half-hour position. I'm recommending one new part-time temporary position in DSS to help with the NC FAST conversion. That's putting a lot of stress in both our food stamp and our Medicaid areas where we're taking on a lot of overtime and comp time costs. And I believe that we need to put some additional resources there, at least on a part-time and temporary basis, till we can get the NC FAST system implemented. I'm also recommending that we shift some dollars from our contractual line on in the DSS budget to a part-time temporary line on for an additional, well, this position already exists, but this would allow them to work more hours in a part-time temporary capacity. I'm also recommending that we continue our wellness clinic through the health department. We believe that that has demonstrated a return on investment and I share that information with you on a monthly basis. I'm also recommending the continued in, in health insurance gain sharing, where it will be basically if employees participate on our health insurance for the full year and we, we generate a savings over a certain amount, we get, we share 20% of that with our employees in a one-time bonus. And we believe that that is incentivizing our employees to be better shoppers and better consumers of their own healthcare. We have choices and I think that, you know, instead of going to the ER, you can go to an urgent care and it costs us far less. And we're really beginning to see that, that our employees are becoming better consumers of healthcare. And we're taking accountability and we're sharing some of that savings with them. And then continuing to pay 100% of employee healthcare premiums. Major budget changes, $173,000 in increase for health insurance. You may ask, why are we increasing it if we're seeing savings? We're self-funded and so, we have to set aside sufficient money for our reserves because this year may be good and next year may be good, but the year after, that may be really bad for us in terms of claims. And we can do some things to control our claims, but unfortunately, when folks are diagnosed with cancer and other things that we sometimes can't control, those really begin to drive our healthcare costs. And we've had a good year and I hope we have a good year next year. But it's important that we continue to, to put some, to adjust our rates so that we have a sufficient fund balance in that fund for those years that aren't as good on our claim side. There's an increase for school resource officers and that's offset by revenue. An increase for the annualized merit, that we did money for merit in January, so we have to annualize that cost for the full year for 2014-15. An increase for the employee COLA, 1% that would be effective January 1. The one-time supplies and materials grant for the school system of $150,000. An increase for deferred maintenance. An increase for the school's current expense, a reduction in school debt, and an increase in elections laptop and printer replacement. In terms of capital outlay, those items that are $1,000 to $9,999. New compactors for solid waste, a debris blower for the airport, installing a storage building for SCUSA and a lubrication machine for the dental, dental tools in the dental clinic. And the request was $26,800 and I'm recommending that full amount. Terms of capital outlay of $10,000 and greater, you can see there are several there, I won't read those to you individually, but there was about $1.1 million in requests. I'm recommending $616,000 in the recommended budget. I will note, the Board of Elections wants to replace their voting machines and they're probably going to come to the, to the public hearing on the 2nd of June at your next meeting and request that you include that in your recommended budget. That, that, I've looked at that. I believe that the technology hasn't, has, is, is, is good through 2016. I believe we have to replace it in next year's budget, but since we're already appropriating 65, recommending $65,000 for laptops and printers for elections, I believe that we could wait another year. That still gives them time to purchase it in, in January, October of 2015 and get it in place for the primary in May of 2016 before the next general, large general election. And so, you know, you certainly are, that, that was my opinion on it. You certainly are entitled to your own opinion on that and whether we should, we should do that in, in this year's budget. But I believe we can get another year out of that elections equipment. Where's our money come from? Revenue summary. And these percentages are roughly the same and consistent with the current fiscal year. No specific revenue source has increased or decreased by more than a tenth of a percentage point. But you can see the majority of our revenue comes from ad valorem taxes and sales tax. Outside agents request, we had a request from Central Park NC. We typically get a request from them and we used to fund them at one point in time, but when budget got tight, we cut them out. I believe the money that we're going to appropriate, or I'm recommending appropriate through cooperative extension for the value-added agricultural processing and commercial kitchen will have more value than the $10,000 we're going to give to Central Park, which is in Montgomery County. And then, and there's just little about we can do to hold them accountable for those dollars. And they're, they're looking for $10,000 to do some sustainable agricultural types of efforts in the region. And then the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and that's really mandated by the local bill that set the Convention and Visitors Bureau up. And so, the request of $25,000 and we're recommending that $25,000. Some fee changes, recommending some increases for plan review in the Fire Marshal's Office. We currently charge for plan review in the inspections Office, but don't charge for any of the plan review of the Fire Marshal's Office. Union County, Cabarrus County, Rowan County, Mecklenburg County, all charged for the plan review in the Fire Marshal's Office. And I anticipate that's a $10,000 increase in annual revenue to help offset the cost of us doing that plan review. I'm also recommending the addition of a, an optional express plan review options for companies that may want to have their plans reviewed in a 48-hour time period or less. And there would be a 600 fee attached to that. There's certainly nothing that says they have to do it. They can go through our normal plan review process. And our goal is to do 90% of those in 10, in 10 business days or less and we, we do a good job of hitting that mark. But this would be an option available to those who, for some reason, want to get their plans through in less time. This would allow us to pay the overtime or cover the loss of worker productivity and pull folks in the office to do that review. Recommending a $1 increase to our household solid waste fee. Albemarle's proposing a, an increase in their landfill tipping fees. And so, that's just going to get passed on to us when we take our solid waste to those, from our convenience sites through the Albemarle landfill by our contractor. And so, to cover that cost, I'm recommending a dollar increase. Recommending an increase in the, our pit relocation as they move the pit up and down at the Aggreg civic Center. It's a very labor-intensive process and I'm recommending that we increase that fee. It's currently $200 to $350 so that we can cover the cost of overtime and labor for doing that. I'm also recommending an increase for adoption fees for cats and dogs. And the Health Department, you'll see in your packets, has requested multiple fee changes for prescription drugs and other procedural-related costs. Volunteer fire districts, there are several have requested an increase. Bethany has requested an increase of 0.25%. Most of these are basically looking at, hey, we've got equipment that needs to be replaced and we want to begin the process of setting aside resources to replace that. Just inflationary costs for their turnout gear, air tanks, fire trucks. In the case of New London, they're looking at replacing air tanks and, and the future replacement of two engines and a 35-year-old tanker. East Side's looking at, associated with gear, air tanks, hose replacement and a future truck replacement. And so, most of these are tied to wanting a request because of the, of the need to be replacing equipment, not necessarily in this year's budget, but in future years. And they want to be able to save those dollars so they don't have to take on additional debt. If you look at our enterprise funds, we're, we're performing fairly well. You can see this where we are from, if you look at our water and sewer bills combined and how we compare against similar-sized counties of, in our economic tier. You know, our bills are in the green range of an $80.93 combined. And that, you know, that, those range from $23.17 in that same group to $142. And so, we're still in that dark green range. If you look at our conservation, we're still pretty close to being in the dark green there. Affordability, when you look at home incomes, we're, we're in the yellow there. And so, I think we have to keep, continue to keep an eye on that. And then our depreciation, you know, that's just the fact that we don't fund depreciation. We fund our budget based on, you know, we, we have to look at depreciation in our enterprise funds, but we don't fund that. If we had to increase and, and actually budget for inflation, your bills would go from the $80 at least into the $142 range if we had to actually budget for that inflation. But you can see our work orders are starting to increase just slightly, but for the most part, we're holding our own there, even though we've added many miles of water line. Our, the one item that I, that we pay attention to is our treated water loss. That's the water we buy from Albemarle and we put into our system, but we're losing almost 25% of that before we're billing that out to customers. Some of that's related to fire departments when they have a fire and they draw that off the tanks. But a lot of this is just water that's lost in the system. I believe that, and when we looked at the replacement of the Baden system, we, we factored that, that, that into some of the, the expense that we would be saving on that. And so, right now, we're at 23.5% on average over the last two years. The national standards for the American Water Association are anywhere to 5% to 25% based on the age of your system. So, that's, that's an item we just have to continue to take a look at. I think we'll, that'll come down as we make repairs to the Baden system. We have a, we have a fairly significant problem in that, in that system because of the age of the system. I'm recommending a 3% rate increase, but that was based on Albemarle proposing a 5% rate increase. They've actually proposed an 8% rate increase for their water and sewer. And if, if that's, if that gets approved by the city of Albemarle, we'll certainly know that before typically they approve their budget earlier than we do. I would recommend that we consider a proportionally higher tax or rate increase that higher than, you know, to, to ramp up. So if they go eight, we would go five. If they go, you know, seven, we would go four, something along that, that we'd be somehow being, staying proportionate to that. Again, the 3% was based on our belief that Albemarle was going to recommend 5%, but they did 8%. And so, we're going to fall behind. Again, the, a huge cost to us is the purchase of water from Albemarle. So if their rates go up, our cost goes up. So that's, that 3% rate increase, the 1931 on 2,000 gallons, $9.91 after, and sewer 687. We're keeping the base rate for our West Stanley wastewater treatment plant. That's the former Oakboro wastewater treatment plant that will now be the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant. We're keeping that base rate consistent with what it was the current fiscal year of $4.30. Overall, the Greater Baden budget increased to $427, $0.50. Stanley Utilities, $276,000. But 195 of that is tied to one-time capital outlay. Our enterprise, other enterprise funds, our airport and our 911. If you look at our airport, our tet, our total jet fuels, we've really began to push up our jet fuel gallons sold and that's a good revenue source for us. With the, the ability to sell to the federal, to the federal government and those folks in, on the federal contract, I believe that we'll, we'll exceed several years of prior gallons sold and that certainly has an impact on our revenue. If you look at our air traffic operations, they're also trending upwards and also sort of getting back to where we were in '09-10 before the economy took a dip. And when the economy takes a dip, general aviation flights take a dip. So, you look at our 911 calls per staff hour, we're, we're sort of staying consistent with where we've been for the last five years. And so, it appears that our staffing is in good, good shape there. And when you look at our outcome of, the number of, the percentage of 911 calls answered in 10 seconds or less, which is the, a Nat, North Carolina national standard, and it's supposed to be at least 90%. Our, our average for fiscal year 13-14 is 94.8% of calls answered in 10 seconds or less. The airport budget, recommending 851,000. That's an $11,000 increase, 1.3%. $245,000 from the general fund. That's a decrease of $44,000. That's a result of less capital outlay. Last year, we bought a big tractor and so, that was a fairly significant purchase and we can back that purchase out. We have increased fuel sales and we have increased rental revenue from renting space to secure camp, you know, secure canopy at the new terminal and to the flight school at the old terminal. And so, as those revenues have gone up, they're less dependent on county dollars for that budget. I'm recommending a $422,000 budget in 911 fund. It's a $468,000 increase, $134,000, $34,000 in fund balance appropriated. But that increase in budget is primarily tied to a one-time uninterrupted power system, basically a backup power system unit that we need to buy and replace in the 911 center. And that would be a one-time cost. So the budget in brief, no tax rate increase recommended. That's the eighth consecutive year. Additional funding for education and workforce development, public schools, $150,000 one-time supplies and materials grant, $25,000 grant to the Community College for energy, energy efficiency improvements. And also 1% current expense increase for the schools and the Community College. Deferred maintenance, additional funds, $125,000 to do some roof repairs here at the Commons. We've got several issues in this section of the building. We replaced the school board section a couple of years ago, but this section of the building, we have some significant water damage in the HR, the manager's conference room and in EDC. We've got, we're showing areas where we're having, we're really having some issues with the roof. We need to get those taken care of before it gets worse. The library, I'm recommending some additional funds there for some renovations. The Snuggs House and the jail, some renovations to the old section. Additional funding for public safety and vehicle replacement, sheriff's office vehicles and some jail equipment maintenance, EMS defibrillator replacement and the 911 backup supply replacement. Investing in employees, a 1% COLA, the paper performance, the continued wellness clinic and the insurance gain sharing, and economic development, the existing industry allocation, the, the continued incentive funding, as well, additional funding for that commercial kitchen upgrade for value-added agricultural processing. commercial kitchen upgrade for value-added agricultural processing. Terms of process and calendar, the June second will be your budget public hearing that aligns with your next meeting on June second. Budget workshops, you need to identify dates, and I would hope that on your June, at your June second meeting, you would do that. Tentative dates that we set up during, when you're, we, we set your budget calendar earlier in the year, were June ninth, twelfth, and sixteenth, but certainly there, there's, you're not married to those dates, and you can, you can change those, but we hope you'll do those on June second because we'll have to recess the June second meeting. And budget adoption is tentatively set for Monday, June twenty-third. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have at this time.
If you've been paying attention tonight, you heard a lot of, a lot of words, both from the school and from the county manager. I hope you're able to listen to all that, that's, that was fast. I think I speak for the entire board when I say we owe a gratitude to the county manager and to the finance staff for the great work that they do. Several of you have been up here longer than me, but I think that you would attest to the fact that we get good presentations. It's helpful to understand the, the broad array of things that we have to deal with and look at, and so we do appreciate that. Are there any comments or questions from, from the board immediately?
Mr. Chairman, this may not be a perfect time, but it's only, has to do with our next meeting. Since Commissioner Morton will not be able to attend on June second, could we possibly move that to June ninth and then stretch our others? I mean, if we need to meet because of statute or something?
We just need to know tonight whether you're going to do that, because we got to do the pub, we got to do the notice of public hearing for the budget, and so we just need to know so we can tell the paper, because we, so we can, we'll, the deadline for that is, is Wednesday.
I think that's a legitimate change request. You want to, you want to make a motion?
I'll make that in form.
Make that change request now?
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McIntyre that we change our next scheduled meeting from June the second to June the ninth. We have a second from Commissioner Dennis. Any questions or comments? Okay, without any, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same way. Okay, so we'd like to move our, our budget. I just, you know, the, the, the thing that, as Andy was talking so fast, that I don't want people to miss out on are all the pluses that are there. We haven't mentioned it tonight yet, maybe that's coming later in somebody's comments, but Stanley County has purchased the wastewater treatment plant in Oakboro. You mentioned that in your comments, and that, I think that's a, that's a huge improvement for county services. Things that you mentioned, tax stability, that our pricing for utilities are compatible with those in the region, we're increasing jobs and, and economic development activity and certainly related agriculture specifically. Our trend line, as Mr. Josie presented to us earlier, even through an economy that's been terrible over the last number of years, continues to move forward, and I think this board has done a, a good job of trying to take care of the staff that work for the county. They've done an admirable job, and there have been efforts that have been made to take care of those, and those are just several other things that, that seem to pop out at me. The conundrum is that, as you heard, the schools are requesting about seven hundred thousand dollar increase, and the county manager indicated that we're only going to have an increase of five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in, in revenues. So already, we're, we're behind an eight ball, looking at every request, knowing that there may be other things that are coming before us as we move forward. So, uh, no comments probably from me at this point, but we do appreciate the work that our staff does, and, and we look forward to getting into the weeds on some of these issues. Again, anybody got a comment? Okay.
Thank you, Andy Paul. What you do. Finance too.
Our next item on the agenda is the Stanley Community College Board of Trustees appointments, and again, our presenter is County Manager Andy Lucas. Stretch that out long enough for you to get your seat.
He did, thank you. You have enclosed a letter from Dr. Kayes regarding two current board members, Miss Stacey Washington and Miss Nadine Bowers, whom, whose terms of expiring will expire on June thirtieth. You also have several names of folks who have applied for these boards in your packet, and so the request tonight is for the board to appoint or reappoint two members to the Stanley Community College Board of Trustees, each to serve a four-year term through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions, Vandy, at this time? Hearing no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that perhaps we reappoint Nadine Bowers. She just took over as the board chair out there six months ago, and is just getting comfortable in that position and keep her going. And also for the second slot, I'd like to nominate Ms. Anita Scott. She was, she did a great job as the chairman of the school board, through some tough times and stuff to, for the, so I'd like to nominate those two people.
Okay, the floor's still open for nominations, or do I hear a second first of all on those? Okay, Commissioner Dennis has a second on those or the other nominations. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion that Peter made to nominate Nadine Bowers and Anita Owen Scott, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Those are the two appointments that we will indicate to Brenda Kayes then. Commissioner Dennis, you had asked for a resolution to be added. That's our next item on the agenda, and I would ask for any comments from, either from you or from our county manager.
I don't have any opinion. I've read the resolutions he put out, the last one, and talked with Commissioner Morton about it. I was, had some other ideas, but he pointed out to me real quick, and then I understood it, and thank you, Commissioner Morton, for why we didn't put the name in there, because it does make it very politically thing. If we leave it generic, it does not make, any, put it on anyone back, and we're just stating that we do support getting our lottery funds money back over a period of time, and thank you.
Let me just go a little bit further into the explanation, if there's someone that may be listening or, or watching on, on this broadcast. Several months ago, we, as a board, passed or endorsed a letter to be written to encourage the reinstatement of county lottery funds as part of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners legislative agenda. That's the number one item on the agenda. I think that the county has been forced to reallocate approximately one to, one point two million dollars from our other programs and services in order to meet the debt that, that we have incurred, and this gives us an opportunity to, to respond to that. There has been a bill that's been introduced in the House, HB one-one-oh-seven. It calls for incremental increase in lottery funds to be appropriated to the public school building capital fund, back up in twenty, in FY fourteen, fifteen to twenty-seven percent, FY fifteen, sixteen to thirty-three percent, and FY sixteen, seventeen, back up to the forty percent that was a part of the original legislation, if I'm saying that correctly. So what we're, what we're considering tonight is a resolution that would express our support for that incremental changes over the course of those three years to reinstate the lottery fund monies back to public school building capital fund. So that's, that's the explanation of what we're, what we actually have before us. Do I have, have any hearing comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, you probably said this, and I missed it, but, but this has been a top priority for the, our state association for many years. A little more background, in two thousand and nine, the administration at that time saw fit to go into, we get this lottery money in several different categories, some of it, most of it, we can't control. In two thousand and nine, it's my understanding that they decided to take money out of capital, which we were using to pay that debt, and place it in early childhood teachers, so that the state could say they didn't reduce the number of teachers, and that's what the administration at that time did. Over the years, that has increased some, and they have not changed that through current other led, other administrations and the current administration. So that's where we got the shortfall, all of a sudden, school system had decided on those projects for Aquadale and Locust, and the amount of the repayment was what they were getting in lottery funds at that time. And when they made the change, it was about five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars less. So in actuality, right now, we're getting about four hundred thousand dollars more total lottery money than we did in two thousand and nine, but it's in different areas, and we can't control where that money goes, so we can't move that to capital, we can't move it anywhere else. So, a little background, I've been, I've been listening to this and looking at it for quite a number of years, and so this is an effort to get the lottery fund, and of course, they've reduced the amount of lottery funds that, that we got, the percentage. So I know they're making more money, but yet our percentage goes down, so I think this is a worthy thing, and I'm certainly in support of the resolution and support of the bill if, if we can get that through, so just my comments and nobody else's. Thank you for the time.
Okay, any other comments or questions about the resolution?
I hope they do sort of pay attention to what we're sending them and how our vote will be, and I hope we do pass it tonight, I think we will. But I don't care how you cut it, when they reduce our, our money from a fund that was set up primarily of that, voted for that, and now they're taking the wording out of it, what worries me that they may do something else to it, so we need to sort of try to head that off, and I agree with Commissioner McIntyre that, you know, we'd like to see them redo it over a period of time and put it back to where it was supposed to be and how the bill was passed and the law was passed the first time, and don't, don't be changing it after we get it passed. Thank you.
One, he, he said something that made me think of something else. In the two thousand and nine, when they did that, I think that school systems thought they would have an option to use capital money for teachers, but they didn't make it an option, they just did it. And so, because some schools didn't need the capital money, they were in good shape capital-wise, and they didn't need that money, but some of us did, but, so if they had given an option, then we may have been okay, but just another comment from me.
I have one comment.
Sure, go ahead.
This matter is a preference priority in the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, is throughout the state of North Carolina, not just Stanley County.
I don't know, I've heard it likened to the fact that if you buy a house and you know what your mortgage payments are going to be, you're okay with that. Then if somebody comes, comes around and strips some of your revenue, then all of a sudden, your mortgage payments stay the same, and, and this, I think this conversation actually speaks to what we, what we've witnessed tonight, is we have a interaction that continues to go on between the county and the schools, but it's all about revenues and things of that nature as well, so hopefully we can get back to where we have the revenues that we can help pay for the, for the commitment that the county has on the capital side, and this is, this is one of the reasons why we're trying to do that. I think we've discussed this quite a bit, I hope, I hope everybody's understanding what we're trying to do, and I would, at this time, ask for a motion.
I move we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Dennis, a second by Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's, the resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve, consent agenda is presented.
Motion by Commissioner McIntyre to approve as presented, second by Commissioner Oshito. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Glad to see Commissioner Dennis, it's like he's feeling a little bit better, and at this point in time, I would.
Thank you for doing what you did.
At this time, I would ask if there's any public comment. We always allow for public comment at our meetings, and we set aside that time, if anyone would like to speak to us tonight. Seeing none, start to my left with Commissioner Oshito for, for comments from the board members.
My words can wait a couple of weeks, I appreciate this Commissioner Dennis showing up tonight, I know he's cutting mine short, so we can get done earlier for him.
Okay, Commissioner McIntyre.
No comment.
Mr. Morton.
I just want to thank the county commissioners for changing the meeting date from June the second to June the ninth. I'll be leaving Friday for a mission trip to Congo. I'll be gone two weeks, and I would miss the meeting on June the second. This been planned sometime, I'll be taking that trip with my son and daughter-in-law, Dennis Southern, Allison Castager, so thank you very much, gentlemen.
Mr. Dennis, no comment? I, I've passed out, asked the manager if he would pass out to you some copies of a stratified strategic transportation corridor plan. The DOT has held, is holding public comments on those, and we're going to be discussing these both with the Rocky River RPO and some others, but I just want to point out again that on this map, like with the broadband map and other maps, we continue to be a donut hole in the middle of North Carolina, and I think that we really need to look at our decisions that we're making as budget comes along, and tax rates, and sales tax and other things, school, schools needs to understand that we've got to step up or else we're going to continue to be left out. And this, again, points it out. I can guarantee you that you already have representatives at the RPO and otherwise that are, are seeking to understand this better and to, and to not allow us to be left out of this process again, but we may come back and ask for you to be able to maybe submit comments to DOT that help support that. But anyway, more to come on this, but I wanted to share that with you. Mr. Manager, you have any comments?
No, thank you, sir.
Madam Attorney.
No comment, sir, thank you.
All right. At this point in time, then, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss economic development in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, parentheses, A, parentheses, four, and a personnel issue in accordance with General Statutes one forty-three, three eleven dot eleven, parentheses, A, parentheses, six.
I'd like to motion to recess this meeting to go into closed session for those numbers he just read out.
Have a motion by Commissioner McIntyre, have a second. Second by Commissioner Dennis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're, we're in closed session.